I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I guess we have to do what we want to do.
Yeah.
And make a motion we approve that.
I second that, all right. The next upward meeting is April 3rd at 5:30.
Will you hold the public hearing first? You open the public hearing first. The proposed order exchanges, if there's any questions.
So I would like to open the public hearing. We're here to discuss a couple of changes in the main resource conversation. Conversation, forget it.
Conservation.
Thank you.
So per DMR, we cannot just add up the word resident in it. We have to strike the whole sentence.
And we have to follow DMR, so there's.
Even though they approved this last year, then I can tell on this, we have to take it out. That's it, strike through those two.
Is there any questions, comments?
In two spots, we're striking the sentence, applicants must not hold a shelter license from another municipality. In two spots, that's the change.
I just want to see who says yes. Any other questions?
Yep. And that's what will be voted on next Thursday, special town meeting, at 1:00.
I'm just with that. We even said we can close the public hearing. And my next upcoming upward meeting is April 3rd at 5:30 at the Town Hall. Old business discussion boundary line with that, that is still in our attorney's hands. We don't have particular recommendations of them yet, how they want to proceed on that. So we'll update you as we get more information. We're going to try to meet with the attorney on some outstanding issues that we have. Any other old business? New business, new firefighter chief Dean and deputy chief Randall.
Ian, thanks for having us. We came to discuss a piece of fire apparatus that we have. It's 20 years old at this point. Something that we're going to have to replace, you know, in the near future. We are looking at replacing this piece of equipment with something that's used. We feel that the cost to replace what we have is, they've gotten to the point where the price of these things are through the roof. And we could get a lot more, we can get a lot more bang for our buck with a used piece of apparatus. It's the squad truck that we use for vehicle extracations and cold water rescue stuff, carrying EMS supplies on it. The truck that we have now was not big enough when we got it new. We also aren't able to get up into the back of it to dawn our cold water rescue suits. We have to do that on the cold. The truck that we used to have, we were able to do that with. This one we can't. So we would, we've already, you know, we've been looking around on the market quite a bit and seeing what's out there. And there's a lot of nice stuff out there that's available. And I feel with my mechanical background and knowledge that we share with fire apparatus, I'm pretty sure we can get in this town a really nice vehicle for a lot less than half a million dollars. There's some really nice stuff on the market between 30 to 75,000 dollars. Obviously, you know, we'd have to personalize it a bit when it came to us, and there'd be an expense for that. But, you know, our capital account appears to be in fairly good shape. And I would like permission to, you know, after this meeting, to take a serious look at what's out there and available. You know, possibly find something to replace this thing, so.
What is your intention? Would you look to sell it outright, trade it?
I would say the one that we have now could get sold. And, you know, the money from that can go back into, you know, the one that's, you know, the one that we're not getting. You know, it's not worth a lot of money, but it's worth, it's worth something, so. It's a truck that has been, it's been pretty good the last couple of years. But since it was new, we have had a lot of problems. We've had to spend a lot of money with serious problems that it's had over the years. And there's some corrosion setting in now.
What year was it, John?
It's 2005.
So we'd love to get, going forward, something on a commercial chassis, a bit more heavy duty. Obviously, there's a height requirement at the station, so, you know, it's kind of limited. And what brought this, you know, kind of boiled us to the top, we actually missed out on two really, really good opportunities because they don't last long. You know, quality. And, you know, there's, not that everybody's looking for the same reason that we are, but we don't have, we don't have time to be able to, you know, take it to the town meeting or anything like that. We have to, we have to action it quickly. So that's why we wanted to have the conversation, bring it to you guys' attention. Move forward, Dylan.
We haven't had, you know, we've seen these come and go, and we obviously haven't had the ability to act quickly. And this is very different than specking out a new truck. You know, going, you know, going to the town and asking for a $400,000 or $500,000 replacement for this thing is, that's pretty much what it's going to be when we replace this thing with a new one. The prices have, every year, they increase significantly. They're going up so fast now that it's almost even harder to believe. When I look at some of the pieces that are available there and the condition that they're in and the mileage that they have, you know, we could put something in that station that would last this town years to come. And it would, it would already, even though it's a used piece of equipment, it would, it would be a way better piece than what we currently have. And it could be far superior to it as far as what you could do with it.
Do you know, tell me, what's in the reserve account right now?
They have over 100,000. And I'm going to do a lot of begging so we can keep our.
Audit wise?
Yeah, we can get a lot of truck for 100,000 and save this town.
Because it's in capital, they need our permission to do it, so.
I just think that we could, because I guess I'm just adding that I don't want to replace what we have with a new exactly what we have. Because, like I said, in my opinion, in 2005 when it was delivered, it wasn't fit for our station anyway. So with the cost that, that would come with replacing just what we have is so, so big.
In this 30 to 75 K range, what age are we looking for? And I guess, more importantly, how far do you think you could extend that to where we're not just having this conversation again in three years, five years?
And that's, you know, we've had discussions about it. Because we've seen, we've seen pieces that were in the 90s that were exceptional. But I do, you know, there has to be some sort of cutoff there. We don't want to go back to 1994, you know. Parts and stuff would be hard to get. I'm hoping for something, you know, 2008-ish newer, maybe a 2012. It depends, but.
And that's the thing where we would look in, like, on the commercial chassis where the age really wouldn't be, you know, if you can, if you can stay under 20 years, the age really isn't the factor, it's mileage, you know. It would be a commercial vehicle that's made to drive, you know, hundreds of thousands of miles. And it's just not going to happen for us, you know. So we can still get something with a little bit of age on it that will last us a long time and would fit what we're trying to do with it for a decent price, you know, save hundreds of thousands of dollars for the town, so. Yeah, you guys have always been incredibly resourceful and made do without the most expensive bells and whistles, which I, I certainly appreciate, I'm sure everyone in town does.
We are fortunate to have, I mean, we do have some beautiful equipment in our station. And like I said, between Nick and I and the knowledge that we have, you know, we will not put some, some has been, one up piece of whatever, you know. We would make sure it was a good.
Out of my field, honestly.
So that's, that's pretty much just a bit. We wanted to, you know, run that by the board and see, see how you felt about it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize Chief Dean to explore the purchase of a new or replacement vehicle for his squad. And that, that would be paid for out of the Fire Department's capital expense account.
I'll second that. All the pay?
Same. Appreciate it.
Second thing on the agenda is consider the proposed ambulance contract with the city of Bath. I think we should look at it. What could, there does seem to be a couple of, under the proposed contract, the new rate for EMS calls will be 40960 per call. In cases where their personnel respond but no services are landed upon arrival, the rate will be 20480 per call. I think that is a decrease.
It's an increase.
That's an increase?
The 0.78% increase.
There, the old contract is behind the new.
Yep.
So it went from 350 to 409, and 175 to 20480. Where I put the line with the 40960, I called them today. And she said, yes, that was supposed to be 20480.
That ended up being a typo, correct?
Yeah.
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Do you know what we're paying currently? I know this contract started at 350, but there's a CBI modifier to the 30. Do you know what that is?
It's 350 and 175. That is a bill in there.
What it was, what I had in my notes for current is 378 for services and transport and 189 for most services.
Is that 378?
378, yep. Right, so it basically went from 378 to 4. I called the 410 because what it was 4 and I didn't change anything.
I guess we agree on this.
Seven percent increase.
Seven and a half percent increase.
And this will not vote to be canceled until June. But where Chief Green brought it in, and it's fresh on in budget season, I wanted to get the approval to sign on behalf of its fresh.
Either you have any concerns with your current arrangement?
I don't have any, so. I would advise that you get yours. Yep. It's right here. And, you know, not surprised to see a bit of an increase from this one. It's the old contract, you know, so.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the new contract for ambulance service with the city of Bath for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2020.
I second that. I think we can look at getting our own ambulance, so. Doing it in Bath is just so much cheaper.
Yeah, it's been discussed before, but, you know, I just said trucks will not go. I got to buy an ambulance now.
Well, thank you.
About 100,000, I figure.
And then it's back.
24/7, right? Yeah.
Number three, I'll adjudge a meeting with interested residents. Interested in agreeing at A2K committee.
So I gave you a little rundown of what's been going on with the A2K. It's the Andruskogut to Kennyback Trail. It's the walking path in Brunswick. They want to continue it to Kennyback River. City of Bath in Brunswick have been in talks for 25 years. And West Bath really hasn't been involved. And I went to a meeting in December and they're basically waiting on a state. West Bath has not had any input on this. And I believe a lot of these residents are here and interested in forming a committee to help get West Bath resident input. What do you want in a walking path? We are, you know, all kinds of questions that we have not asked. And if we form a committee to do this work, we can get information. And when the state's ready, we will have what West Bath is looking for. This was brought to me by Helen Hudson, who is very interested. She's actually held a few meetings at her house with residents.
So is the thought to have Helen?
On the committee?
Yes. To maybe have her lead the committee. Sounds like you probably already know some interested people.
I have been collecting names and emails of people that are interested and their neighbors and other residents that they know are interested. Some of them are here and there's actually quite a few others. I would be happy to be on this committee. I will apply to be on this committee if we need to apply. And I think some of these other folks also would. I want to make sure that, you know, we have a seat at the table and that this path works for West Bath residents, that we have a way to get on it, hopefully somewhere to park, since it won't be very convenient for a lot of people.
They've been here presenting this, and I think it's also very important. I have to say, you know, how they're crossing the Rose River. A couple of their ideas sounded pretty dangerous. So I think it's important that the town had included to that also. The thought of having a walking path on state road is pretty scary to me.
Well, they started with the three, and they come up with one final, going down the highway.
It's all marked, the one. Because that was their first idea that they proposed, not the current.
Which would be very convenient because it goes through the courthouse, which is a state-owned. And that could be a possible on off.
Maybe with the parking.
This courthouse.
Oh, I thought she has to be marked according.
But BIW is also on the committee that I'm on, representing West Bath. And that having a lot of input. I don't believe they have put them on the committee before.
And I wonder how much parking will need at Hookers once that parking route is built, is that another opportunity?
And I.
Thank you, I'm really glad to see some people step up and take interest in this because it's probably going to reshape our town a little bit and maybe become more of a community based on just a parking gathering, parking lot. And provide lots of insight into your town and other things that spring from there, so.
So, and I met with her and we talked about communities and how many, because this would be all new, you'd have to vote to create it. And I told you, don't want more than five. Because if you don't have a courthouse, you can't have a meeting. But all public is welcome with all input, so.
So is the thought process due that you would work to help them get this going?
Tim Blair, that's been working with City of Bath, said he would sit with us, help us in room.
So what do you need from us?
To make a recommendation to create the board of how many members? Do you want a three-member board, two alternates? Five-member, two alternates?
What, what is your feeling?
The committee part is all new to me. So I, I feel like my skills line, organizing community and gathering support, I really haven't ever been on a committee like that before. So I don't know, I don't know if advantages or disadvantages between the sides.
Ten minutes.
Just getting.
Getting, getting the courthouse, obviously, the smaller, the. If you have a three-person committee, you have to have two people show up. If you have five, you have to.
So maybe smaller.
Sounds like you will have to.
I hope not.
And we want alternates.
I will go ahead and make a motion that we create an charter of the Kennyback Trail Committee of three members with two alternates.
I'll second that, Mr. Hutton.
And we have committee applications available on the website, or we have them here at Town Hall, so.
Afford that, say what we can get.
Thank you very much.
Discuss town administrator's vacation contract.
Okay, so I gave you a printout as a 313 table, but it was processed on 3/4 before I left. My first reading was 3/7. So you see the printout from 3/17. And because it's use it or lose it, you can only carry over 40 hours. And the week has on vacation, the 40 hours came. I have six hours vacation months, a plus.
So our, our policy is you lose it on your inter-education.
On, you can only carry over 40 hours, which I used that week.
So what?
So minus 40 from the 135 would be 95.79 hours. And it's not that I'm looking to do weeks vacation. I would do all week ends, when I was unable to.
Given the circumstances, I am comfortable coming ahead and making a motion that we add an additional 95.79 hours back to town administrator's vacation bank.
I second that.
May I have a question?
Yes, Mr. Hutton?
I'd say it's, it's well deserved.
Absolutely. Physically impossible, but I think so.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
A lot more in contract.
So I did not, I was hoping to work with Emily, also hers, and she, we haven't been able to get it, so.
So we just want to table that?
Table that, yes. I'll have it for next week, I mean, next week, I'm sorry.
Do you have that one you shared with us a couple of weeks ago in Word? Would you mind sending it to me?
I would love to, I will just.
I had a lot of suggestions, I'll just, I'll line them in so we can have them.
Perfect.
Maybe that'll help get you started.
I was hoping to get Emily's because I knew you had seen it. And I was hoping to.
I don't have access to any of that stuff anymore, but I.
Yeah, and she didn't have it very handy and then didn't have to, so. I'll send that to you.
Any other new business?
I guess, so Julian knows about this. But so in 2021, I completed 12 conservation hours for my claim license. And Carly marked that down on her sheet that we were good. And there's three, four other people that have done that also. I'm not sure if you heard about this. But, so, once we're sure, I'm being told now that there may not be a lottery. So I was told, I was told by Carly, once you put your 12 hours in, you're good for the duration of any lottery that goes on.
There will be a lottery.
We just got confirmation of that at 3 o'clock this afternoon. It's been a lot of back and forth, and now we have to advertise. Hopefully, and advertising now is tricky. So we have to figure that out first thing in the morning. Because Times Record is going to one day a week.
As long as it's a lottery, that's all I care.
Yes, there will be a lottery. And we have one other question to ask DMR because there's one that's applying for an adult license that currently has a student that only has to have six hours conservation. So will he be included in the lottery?
Well, he, if you look back on the records, right, his, his box is green also.
But he's held a license, so your conservation hours don't get carried forward. They only get carried forward until you hold the license.
I don't think that would be true with a student license because.
That's why we have to confirm with DMR.
No, it's right, it's right in the code. It says that if you're a student license, it does not. If you have a student license, it does not go for, it says it right in the, right in the ordinance.
But we have to confirm that because DMR is telling us what to do. We'll have an answer tomorrow, confirm it.
Well, it's right in the code that the student license does not apply, the hours do not apply. The time as a student license does not apply to the adult license. Does that make sense? Like, it says right in the.
It does, yes.
We'll just confirm it with DMR because we have made some mistakes in the past and we don't want to repeat this.
But there will be a lottery, and we'll let you know when that lottery is.
We'll make sure that the people that are part of the lottery are present, if they can be, that's how.
We've been trying all week, back and forth, and we finally got a final answer this afternoon.
That way you're all seeing the same thing, you're seeing how it's being conducted and makes sense. Any other new business? I just, it's not in yet, and I just want to go back to old business if I can. Just, where are the other funds? And I know some of you are sick of hearing.
Future agenda, I'm planning it down there. Me and John had, I did get a quote on the door. And we finally, again, I get a second quote, possibly a third on the front door of the year. And John made a discussion about the other funds at the fire department, the doors. You had that discussion today, is that going to be done?
Oh, right, yeah.
The ADN.
We had a meeting with PQ Door today. There were some issues there. We got those ironed out, and then we've had two other people come and check out this, this front door situation. So that should be getting back on track.
And the generator?
I'll just go ahead and I'm just going to say it out loud. All we do is chase people, every day, all day. You can't get anybody to do anything. So we've just been working on trying to get people here to give them money to do stuff for us. And as soon as we can make that happen, then stuff will get done.
Is there any, I have a lot of faith and confidence in you. Is there anything wrong with purchasing the generator and worrying about the other stuff later?
I don't think so. It would involve me in the lease because the gas is coming from N W S U and they drop it off for free. And then they charge you to fill it up. So I was, you know, there was some misleading information on that. And it just so happened I had it done in my house a couple of months ago on my new garage, and I know exactly how it works. So I am confident that you could have the generator put in here and figure out that the gas is, call N W S U and they come right over. and figure out that the gas is coming from N W Sewell and they come to order.
Because I think it's just, the price is just going to keep increasing.
Absolutely.
And Julie and I had a discussion today about who we are dealing with with the generator. And it's going to be a phone call, and one more opportunity, you want to do this and on. And we'll move on if we don't, so.
Me and Carla?
Yeah. That's just the way, the way I'm operating from that one.
If they don't want to...
Three months, three months now, four months? If you don't feel like one more call is necessary, I'll find someone else.
Me too. Because it just feels like they don't want to.
This is starting my life with vendors and the fire departments, everything that I do is chase people.
We'll save the phone, we'll answer the phone.
As I said before, I have complete confidence in what any decision you make.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any public comment?
Most public we've had in the past.
Thank you all, I'm doing all that you do. We love living here.
So future agenda items, we talked about after, policy and job descriptions, April 3rd meeting, are going to be reviewing those?
Yes, I received information from Krista, feedback. And I can send that out to you so you can review it before as well.
Any select for the conference announcements? I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for personnel evaluation for one MRS A, 405, 6K. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.